Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order our regular scheduled council meeting for Monday, August 22, 2022, at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members that have given their lives while defending our country. Would everybody please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We have Mr. Smith with us tonight, our deputy clerk. He got called up from Toledo today. Now, Mr. Miller's under the weather, and hopefully he'll be back at the next meeting. But glad to have you. Can you take the roll, please?
Mayor Walker.
Here.
Mayor Protam Squires.
Here.
Councilmember DeMichael.
Here.
Councilmember Earl.
Here.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
Councilmember Karafotis.
Here.
You have a quorum of seven.
Thank you, sir. Item four, approval of the agenda.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the approval of the agenda with one change, 11A to B, changing the name from Stacy Karafotis to Pat Squires.
Support.
Support from Councilmember DeMichael. Any discussion from the table? Councilmember Karafotis.
I was on the DDA and was asked to resign before I became on council. There's a reason that we had that. I think it's a conflict of interest when you're on the DDA and the council.
Well, we found out that council members could serve on the DDA. The state law supersedes our charter, and it is a mayoral appointment, and I offered to put you back on, and you said no. But it is a mayoral appointment, and that's the two that I want to put on tonight.
So, Mayor, question is, do we discuss this under Agenda or under Consent Agenda? Because I have lots to discuss about it.
Okay.
Yes, consent.
Okay. This is just set in the agenda. It would be under item 11. So, approval of the agenda. Any further comments from the table, from the general public? Mr. Murray.
Am I correct in understanding that you're going to take from item 11, Consent Agenda 2, and put that in our action items? Is that what I'm understanding?
No.
No.
How could we get that put in, that approval put into the action item? You can shake your head no, but I will contest that the state law doesn't necessarily supersede, because if you go to the Meeting Act, the first paragraph, last sentence states, "What is best for the citizens?" So what you're doing is you're taking a position that could be litigated, and do you really want more legal costs, Mr. Walker?
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 7-0. We have no recognition tonight. Do we have anybody from the county or the state here? I don't see any. No presentations, no community events, no petitions and communications, no public hearings. Moving on to item 11, the Consent Agenda.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the approval of the Consent Agenda, item 11A1 and 2.
Support.
Support from Councilmembers Squires. Discussion from the table. Mayor? Councilmember Earl.
All right, first, so currently, you're the representative, because you're the chief operating authority of the council, correct? So that's why you're on the DDA per the city charter. Before this, we've never put a council member on. I'm curious as to why.
Well, didn't think we could before, and I have trouble getting people to show up for meetings, and I want people that are going to be positive and that want to move the city forward. So that's the choice that I've made.
So because of how the charter's written, you didn't think you could because of charter?
Right. And then we found out, we asked the city attorney, and he investigated and said that the state law supersedes and that I could put council members on the DDA.
So...
Because they're not compensated.
Did the city attorney give us a written opinion or oral?
I believe it was oral.
Oral?
Did he give a written? Okay.
Okay. And we got charged for that, right? Usually? Okay, so here's the issue that I have. The city charter says the mayor's on it, and that's it, right? State law doesn't mandate that you have to put council members on. It gives you the ability.
Gives me the ability.
I've talked to many people, including attorneys, on this, and every single person I've talked to, I've talked to other city officials, I've talked to legal attorneys who deal with this kind of stuff, and they said, because state law doesn't mandate that you have to put council members on, that it's, that it's basically, you may do it, but our charter says you can't do it. You can't go above, or you can't just erase the charter on this. Because the state law doesn't mandate that we have to do it, then it falls back to the charter, and the charter says we don't do it. We haven't done it for a reason. So I'm opposed to this, because I think you're violating the charter if you do this. And I want to know, if you do violate the charter, what's the consequences of that? So I don't know why we would want to play around with that. I hear what you're saying, that you want to put people on it, but I've heard in the past, people argue, "We don't want a lawsuit, we don't want a lawsuit, we don't want a lawsuit," but we seem to keep trying to create lawsuits. So I'm opposed to this. I'm asking that to be completely stricken from the Consent Agenda, and I want to hear from the attorney, and I want the attorney to put it on record that what we want to do is okay. I want him to sit here and say it, because then, if we get sued, he's the one that has to pay, not us.
Yeah.
Okay? That's my, I have an issue with it, because I don't really think that the attorney thought this through, and I don't really think that it's something we can do or should do.
I agree.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch.
May I throw the chair to our city manager? Do you remember when we got that attorney's opinion? Because I know we've had it for a long time.
Yeah, I was inquiring about the candidate running for office, if they were able to stay in a position as well as be a council candidate and/or council position. And that's where it came about, that as long as they're a board member at the DDA, that's fine, they can be a city council. My experience with it in other states, similar open meetings acts, that it was, our board was 100% of the DDA. That we'd have a council meeting, a board meeting at 9:30, or I'm sorry, 6:30, a DDA meeting, 7 o'clock was the council meeting. So to me, that's not unusual or unheard of, but when the attorney came back with the backup also, was the follow-up was once he said, yes, if you're a board member, you could be on both, then it was confirmed again, are you saying for sure? I believe that was sent out to the council, was it not?
Yes, it was.
The state law. So, I mean, if Councilman Earl's recommendation to be on the rest of the council is to have him come back and, you know, state it again to be sure, that's up to how the council wants to handle it, but it's not a question of, is it allowed or not, I don't believe, but if there's questions Councilman Earl has, then it's up to the council to follow up on how you want to do it.
Mayor?
There was a written opinion that described it with the law, and you could see it.
And that would have been back April-ish, right?
Oh, and then recently, I believe in June, just as a follow-up.
The follow-up.
I think it was middle of June was when we finally received even more confirmation. Because originally, it was, was it allowed for the situation of the person running for office? In June, it was, was it allowed to move forward, because we've got some openings that the mayor may want to fill with council people.
Because it didn't have anything, the Incompatibility Act wasn't against it also. I remember that part of it.
Yes.
Okay.
That's one of the rare, it's literally listed as DDA's, TIF financing organizations, you've seen the law, it actually details it.
Right.
So, but it's up to the council's decision.
So we have a written opinion from our city attorney, and that's why we have a city attorney. And he's already written the opinion. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. It's up to, it's up to council.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch.
I have no problem holding number two until the next meeting, if we need to. And if we can get the attorney here and...
That's fine.
...state it, that's fine with me.
I would just like to state, just after what Councilmember Earl had stated, if it's his understanding that the state charter does not supersede ours, and if we can go ahead and get the attorney in here to get him on record stating that it is, that the state does supersede ours, and then that way, he would be held accountable, like Councilmember Earl said, and I would prefer to table this until we can get them in here to state so.
Okay, so we need to table, we need to table this thing.
So I'll amend my motion for 11A, number one. And Mrs. Squires, if you agree?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so we're only passing 11?
A1.
A1.
Do we have to put a date as to when we're going to table that and bring that back?
Yes, just for a future meeting.
Yeah, for a future meeting.
And table number two, A and B, for a future meeting.
Okay, so the motion and a second to table. Any more comments from the table on this?
Well, I kind of made it as one whole motion.
Okay. From the general public.
I was a DDA member that's not being replaced. I missed very few meetings. I saved the chili cook-off from five teams to 21. I brought the Santa Lam parade back from death. I was the only person that did garbage for the Lucky Squirrels during the 2020 pandemic, the worst time in history where people wouldn't even go outside. I volunteered, did garbage for it. Nobody else helped out. And now I'm being removed from the DDA board because you don't like my comments based on the library. I'm just saying, I've been to meetings, there's people that have come to meetings, and it's wrong that you're taking me off the DDA board. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
My issue right now is, is your quotes, I'm maintaining the charter. As of right now, I have a FOIA. The question was, as a five-year review, I asked the city manager if he received one when he became the city manager. I found through a FOIA, he did not. As of right now, we do not have one. So you can quit cherry picking that charter, because I'm sick and tired of it, Walker.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My question is, what good is a charter anymore? We have a charter. If you're not going to follow it, what good is it? What are you going to do about it? I think this is bad optics to appoint council members to the DDA. We all know the city manager wants the DDA gone. Yeah, you're going to load it up with council members? So you can have them vote the way you want them to? I'm against this. You need to find people in the community that are interested in serving and get more people involved.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mike Farren, live on Barton Street, and I own Podium Skates and formerly Prestige Eyewear. It's obvious what this is. It's a power grab by the mayor to try and get two like-minded council members on the DDA board so that he can get his way on everything. We have citizens that are interested in serving. We have citizens that have done a fabulous job volunteering on this board. We don't need the mayor to appoint two of his lackeys to the DDA board. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, all in favor?
I have something to say.
Go ahead.
I take that as a personal attack.
I'm going to say a few words. When I appoint people... Only speak when you're called. Only speak when you're called to the podium. Remove him, please. Thank you. Thank you. Disturbing the government meeting. Okay, my comments on this, when I promote people to a board or commission, I want professional people that are positive and want the best interests of the city. When I have a member for the last two years gets on social media and constantly attacks the city administration, the mayor, the city manager, I don't need him. I don't need him on the, on the board or commission, so. And I didn't kick him off. His term expired. I'm just not reappointing him. Okay? That's all I'm going to say on this. Take the vote.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Karafotis?
This is the table, correct?
This is, the motion is to approve item 11A1, the minutes, and the table, the appointments, until a future meeting.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Aye.
Councilmember Earl?
Aye.
Councilmember DeMichael?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye, thank you. Moving on to item, action items, B1, Garden City Library Lease Agreement. Mr. Dackerty.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm proud to bring to you the library board extension. It actually starts September 1st. So we've got a couple of weeks technically till the contract begins. It will extend till 2025. It allows also the library to expand into the former Senior Fitness Center, which we've, I believe, changed the ceiling tiles, painted the walls, and new carpet is about to be installed into that, so that'll expand the library's footprint a little bit. So we are set. They have signed the agreement, and it's before you to execute from the city side. Thank you.
Mayor?
Okay, motion's in order. Councilmember Squires?
I move to approve a lease agreement with the Garden City Library Board for a period of three years in the amount of $48,100 per year.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Any comments from the table?
I'd just like to say that I'm glad that we were able to finally get an agreement and did it on record.
Very good. Any other comments from the table? From the general public?
Drew McMeacon, I live on Whitby Street. Drew McMeacon, live on Whitby Street, I'm the president of the Garden City Library Board. I just want to extend my thanks to the council and the mayor for giving the library the opportunity to have the additional room at the Maplewood Center. We look forward to continuing to provide great free programs for all of the citizens of Garden City, and we look forward to having a dedicated space to do that. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 7-0. Item 2, Radcliffe Fence Bid Award. Mr. Dackerty.
Thank you, Mayor. As we're continuing the changes for the future for Radcliffe, before you is a request for fencing at three locations on the property. We received bids from three different vendors. Disma came at the lowest price. The three fence areas we're looking at is the new garden for the food pantry on the south side of the building, and on the west side of the building, east side of the building, we're looking at Moving Head Start's playground. They're paying for the playground pieces we would put the fence in. Currently, they use one of the courtyards for their playground, which has the children going through the building out to the courtyard. Here, we're looking to put the playground just outside their door, and the same fencing between those two spots, as well as the third spot is around the courtyard. It used to be the open entrance going into the former school. Our new entrance will be on the west side, so we'd look to corner that off as a courtyard for a security purpose. People six months out of the year can sit out on that courtyard and be behind that decorative fencing. So the fencing around the building will be the same style at three different locations. So that's the request before you.
Okay. Motion's in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember DeMichael?
I move to approve a contract with Disma LLC for the installation of fencing at the Radcliffe Center in the amount of $25,650. Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Comments from the table? Mayor? Councilmember Jacobs?
Mr. Dackerty, when will this be installed?
Probably within the next few weeks.
So my question is, we've been waiting for a fence at the ice arena to protect the air conditioning units that people can climb on and get to the roof for over a year that was approved, but there's no material and nothing else. Why isn't that done?
I will check on that. I'm not aware of that.
We brought it up. That's all I have.
Any other comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 7-0. Item 3, Excess Equipment Auction. Mr. Dackerty.
Thank you, Mayor. As you notice in some of the photographs, we auction off vehicles periodically. This is an opportunity to auction off some chairs and tables. One of the things, as we did take over Radcliffe, we've got a number of, all the rooms were classrooms. All of them had chairs, tables, like a college class. Obviously, a few rooms are going to become dance rooms, so therefore, those chairs and tables are excess. We have other rooms that are going to become game rooms, a fitness room, and some others. All those chairs and tables and computers that were in those different rooms also become excess. So computers especially, we had our IT staff go through them. They, most of them are in the 15-year-old or older range, referred to basically as boat anchors. So they would normally be dumped. My position was, at least, we'll see if somebody's interested in buying some of these. As you see in some of the pictures, we've got mixed match of chairs, chairs that won't be needed and just would be put in storage, if anything, for probably a long time. So we've got some excess here that isn't going to be helpful to us at all, and it does not hurt us for the future whatsoever. So this is a request. We're looking at possibly, if this passes, next weekend, the weekend after that, we just want to make sure the, how the auction process is going to go, but just permission from the council to move forward in auctioning off these pieces.
Okay. Motion's in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch?
I move to approve an auction of excess equipment from the Maplewood and Radcliffe Centers to include computers, fitness equipment, chairs, and tables.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Comments from the table? Mayor? Councilmember Earl?
Just a question, on the computers, I understand, are outdated. Is there a way to hold back some of them that maybe we can give to seniors that might need a computer or indigent families that can't, you know, I'm looking for a way, maybe we can help some of the people out with some of this equipment. Looks like there's a ton of them.
Yes, there are. That's a consideration. We don't have to sell everything at auction. Some things may not go at auction at all, so that's something, if you're interested in that, we could take a look at after, sure.
Absolutely. Okay.
Yep. And part of the computer lab replacement is that $200,000 grant we received from Wayne County, and part of that is to invest into a full computer lab. So as we go into a new building with new classes and programming, it's best to go with new computer system than, since the money is for that, than to try to use 15-year-old computers. It's a good idea.
Any other comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes, 7-0. Item 4, Fire Alarm System. Mr. Dackerty.
Thank you, Mayor. This one gives me a little heartache for the fact of what we had to do here. Rarely does it happen, this was my first time here in Garden City, of an emergency purchase for an item. So the fire suppression system at, at Maplewood is fine, but it's not designed for the new rules of 2020 for school systems, as we were told by the fire inspector. So we had to upgrade the system to be able to have GSRP start their classes in September. If not, to go wait for the council meeting, go through the bid process or anything else, we would probably miss the GSRP season, which would be $80,000 in rent. In the meantime, we actually did receive at least two written quotes, one for $27,000 and the other one for $36,800, as far as to see where we are in way of cost. Two other vendors said that it would be well after, in October, November, they wouldn't be able to bid at all. So we didn't just go with one bidder at all, but we couldn't wait too long, otherwise, we basically are looking at the simple question of, do you spend $27,000 to bring in $80,000, or do you lose $80,000 altogether, because we're going to wait to go through the longer process? It still had to be done for a school system, but we already do have a security system in Maplewood. It's not a question of the place is not safe, just when it comes to school regulations, as most people know, schools have different rules, much tighter regulations, and the 2020 rules, we were not up to date for. So the request was to do the $27,000. I did contact the council about this last week, as it came through, to try to move on it as fast as possible, but this is the formal process of going into the record, that the purchase was made and the request of the council, even though we're in the process right now of the installation. Very rare circumstance of an emergency purchase, but financially, this one did make a lot of sense.
Okay.
Mayor?
Councilmember DeMichael?
I move to approve a contract with Valiant Security LLC of Wayne, Michigan, in the amount of $27,073.25 for the installation of a state-approved fire alarm system within the Maplewood Center. Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Any further comments from the table?
I have a question.
Councilmember Karafotis?
So it's just in the area where GSRP is, it doesn't involve any other part of Maplewood?
No, not yet, no. That was going to be a much larger cost, and we don't want to run that as an emergency situation, but we will come back in the future for that one. Correct.
Any other comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 7-0. Item 5, Michigan Homeowner Assistance Fund. Mr. Marsiniak, our city treasurer. How you doing tonight, sir?
Fine, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Before you is a partnership agreement with MISTHA to get into a program. I'd like to read a brief synopsis of this program. So Michigan was allocated 2.42.8 million from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, homeowner assistant fund portion. The program, which Governor Whitmer designated MISTHA as the program's operating agency. MISTHA can help homeowners with delinquent utility payments once Garden City signs up to be a participant in this much-needed program. This program can also help homeowners with delinquent mortgage and housing payments, delinquent property taxes that are at the county, and delinquent condominium association fees to help them avoid foreclosure and displacement. MISTHA may award a grant to qualified homeowners whose incomes do not exceed 150% of the median income from Michigan as set forth by HUD. The homeowner can obtain information from the program and how to apply with MISTHA. Most likely, just do a word search, do a search engine for Michiganmyhaf, M-I-H-A-F, and it will come up easier than me trying to read this very long website. So also, the grant proceeds will be paid So, also, the grant proceeds will be paid directly to Garden City to be applied to the homeowner's delinquent utility account. This program requires no financial commitment from the city on the homeowner's behalf. Currently, 77 of the 82 Michigan counties are participants in the program, as well as some of our neighboring communities, including Wayne, Westland, Dearborn, Canton, and Romulus. So, I think this is a good program for those in Garden City who need some help at the moment, who are behind on their utility bills, and also, I'd like them, encourage them to continue to look further into the program as their needs arises.
Very good.
And from my understanding is, right now, there has been, people are trying to participate, but they're nowhere near giving away $242 million yet.
Mayor.
Plenty of availability.
Councilmember Lynch.
I move to become a Michigan Homeowner Assistance Fund, MIHAF, partner as a provider of public utilities with Michigan State Housing Development Authority, MISTDA.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any comments from the table?
I think it's a great thing because there are people that are in need, and hopefully they will go forward if they need the help.
I have a question. How long has this program been around?
It actually started in late spring.
This is the first year for it?
Hmm?
This is the first year?
Yes, this is the first year.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any other comments? Sounds like a good program. From the general public?
I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Come on up.
Did I capture, there's no cost to us as a community for, to participate in the program?
Correct. There's no cost to us.
And is there any other things that we're required to do as a community?
You gotta, you gotta talk to council, please.
Or, well, my question is...
You gotta get in the microphone.
You gotta get in the microphone.
I see. Thank you. My question is, are we bound as a community to something with regard to this program? Is there anything besides money that we are required to participate in, in that program?
Explain how it works, just somebody comes to you?
Really, it's, the people participate, the people participate with the state, all the funding is through the state, other than, you know, the tip, hopefully, this will keep people from the utility bills not going on to the, onto the tax report, or the tax bills, and there is no financial commitment from the city.
Thank you.
I mean, just, you know, a little bit of processing, but, you know, that's, that's what we're here for.
And the city is not bound to this?
All we, all we're bound to is accepting the payments from the state instead of the homeowners.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the general public?
Mayor. I just, I'm sorry, I was just quiet when you said something. I just would like to see something about this go on, the Garden City buzz with the water bills, the next time it goes around, so that way, all the residents will be aware of the program.
Yep, that's a good point.
Yes, they provide some promotional stuff through the website for their, for the partner, member partners, and the list, there's a list on there of who's involved, and it is a quite lengthy list beyond just communities, but between homeowners, mortgage companies, there's a lot of people getting involved in this right now.
Great.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes seven zero.
I thank you, and I'm sure the residents who are in, thank you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Marsiniak. Item 12 Other Business, we, nobody brought any up to put on the agenda tonight. We'll go to public comments. If you want to speak, please come to the podium. There's a three-minute limit, and it's your opportunity to make a comment or a statement. Go ahead, Mr. Kramer.
I'm a whistleblower in a misuse of public funds case in Garden City. In late April, I asked Dan York if he needed to cover any game, if I needed to cover any games for him at EMU. He said, "I'll let you know, I have a conference in Florida in May." It was canceled, but the city has already paid for the airfare and hotel and the Christian...
What? You cannot discuss employee issues up here.
This happened to me.
You can't discuss, he was an employee, you cannot discuss employee issues.
I...
You cannot discuss employee issues.
You didn't say that? This, this happened to me, Mayor.
I know.
My life has been threatened, my anonymity was promised by the police chief in this issue, and then the city manager, he told Dan York about this.
You cannot...
Put me in danger, so I'm in danger, the people are robbing the city, and I can't talk about it.
Please take a seat.
This is wrong.
Please take a seat.
This is wrong.
Please take a seat. Anybody else under public comments?
I'm Suzanne Coller, and I am the owner of It Takes a Village Academy. My GSRP program is going into the Maplewood Center, and I just want to thank all of you, and especially Marge, Scott, and Brad from DPS, and Doc. I just have to say that they have put this all together very quickly, and I really appreciate it because this was kind of like a last-minute thing, and everybody came together, and it's helping us out tremendously, and I just want to let you all know that we have a walkthrough. I have a flyer I'll pass around later to all of you. On May 30, or, August 31st, from 6:00 to 7:30, we invite all of you to come and walk through, as well as the whole community, to come and see all the progress and all of our classrooms that are getting ready to start the GSRP program. Thank you all.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Fair.
I would like to say, I would like to apologize to the two council people that I insulted inadvertently. When I speak off the cuff, sometimes I don't choose my words wisely, and I did not choose them wisely tonight. I should have said, in my opinion, like-minded people, and that's how I'll leave that. My apologies. I don't think either of you are what I described you as when I stood up earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Fair. Anybody else?
I've got a friend who's going to...
Ms. Fair.
I'm not talking about employee issues, I'm talking about a resident that is at risk here because something happened within the city, and it was brought to the city manager's attention, and I believe there was dereliction of duty, and other employees that have worked for the city who have made mistakes in the same capacity have been demoted, they've been suspended without pay, and I fear that our community is in serious trouble. There appears to be a very toxic environment that is running through the halls of this administration, and it is spreading out into our community, too. There is a lot of negativity in this town, a lot. People are unhappy with sidewalk issues that were forced upon them. The list is endless. I'm asking council to open your eyes and look at what's happening in this town. What happened in this building was similar to a teenager acting out, made a very bad decision, took other people with them, and it's, it's heart-wrenching. It's terrible for our city, and it's terrible for the people that work here. They deserve better. We, as citizens, deserve better, and I'm asking each of you to open your eyes to what's going on and deal with these issues, or you can just put the whole town on suicide watch, or maybe when there's a homicide, you'll wake up. But things need to change here, and they need to change for the better, for the employees and for the residents, and you need to get word out to us. I'm tired of feeling like I live in a shallow grave here. You have the ability to put information out on Facebook and keep the residents informed, and it's convenient to keep everybody in the dark. I want better for my community, and I want all of you to wake up and address that issue.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Hunt.
It's amazing how we're financially sound. I believe over many years here, I've been here since '84, we had some real clowns sitting up there before. We had some horrible meetings. People are making sound decisions, financially responsible decisions. We have police cars, we have fire trucks, we have different grants and things coming through to help us out. We're in good shape. One problem, Wayne Inkster can't hire firefighters, police, or anybody to help him out. This place has stayed stable. You guys have done a very good job. Why are we here right now? It's time for an election. So, everybody get up and sling the mud. This is a joke. Keep up the good work that you're doing. The comments over there, I don't like either. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Moeller.
I talked about DTA Energy did a lot of work in my area, tore my line up real good, come out and supposedly fixed it, put like a three-inch of moats down, throw grass seed on it. Of course, none of it come up, so I called them out again. This time, they come out, they throw some dirt on top of the moats, throw some grass seed on it, then the more I look around, and when it rained, it washed the rocks off. I got probably as many rocks, gravel all over, it's like they had a half truck of gravel, half a cup of topsol. I've got them coming out again, maybe if they got enough guts to show up. They may not now because I wasn't too kind to them. I asked them for a job. I told them I'd do the landscaping, they asked me, "Was I a landscaper?" I said, "No," but what's the difference? The other two guys ain't either. And Doc, remember when you come here, I told you, "I take my time, see how you do," and I told you, "You did great." I also told you what was going to happen to you a few years down the road. It's happened to every city manager we had. There was a city manager, we had the three police chiefs, and they were good guys. They had good intentions, but they didn't know what they was doing. The library got gone under one twice, they sold it twice, because it didn't sell the first time, so we put it on the, the next time, he sold it again. The little library's gone. My wife's really disappointed about that. She loved that little library. She hasn't been to the new one because she said it's a children's library, she won't go in it. And the library people, they keep coming up here and attacking everybody. The one guy that came up two weeks ago, he told, he told it right. They want to be treated like any other, any other tenant. I agree with him. So, here's the question, when are you going to give them a 30-day ignition, 30-day notice to move out because they didn't pay the rent for all that time? So, I say, give them the 30-day notice, catch up on your rent, or leave. Simple as that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mayor, I have a question. Oh, sorry.
Ms. Dole.
Kim Dole, DDA Director. I just wanted to take a moment and publicly thank Kevin Kramis for the work he has done with the DDA Board in the last several years. As he mentioned, he does volunteer consistently. He's one of my few trustees that do come out and volunteer and help us work. He is also the only one, not the only one, he's one of the few trustees that show up every month when he's supposed to. So, I want to publicly thank him for doing that, and I would also ask this council to try to put this out to the residents, that we need people. I never see it on anything. I don't see it in the buzz, I don't see it on our website, I see it nowhere. So, maybe if it's put out, we would have some residents that would come forward, that would be willing to serve, and would be willing to show up every month. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mayor, I have a question. Can you clarify, please, what people are supposed to talk about at the podium? I know you said that not allowed to talk about employees. Can you just give us an example of...
They can make any comment they want, but they can't talk about employee issues that were, you know, what happened in the last couple of weeks. You can't discuss an employee.
I realize, like...
The employees report to the city manager. The city manager reports to us.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm just asking what they're allowed to talk about. So, we've had people come up and, you know, insult you, or insult the city manager, or say certain things, and they're never told to sit down or not talk about it. So, I'm just curious about what exactly is supposed to be said at the podium.
The rules are on the back of the...
I read the rules. It doesn't say anything about employees.
You can't, you can't discuss employee issues.
Okay, so if someone wants to talk about something other than the employee, and he wants to talk about himself, can he do that?
Talk about himself, but he can't bring up the employee, which he was doing. So, okay?
Gotcha.
Anybody else? City managers report.
All right, just next meeting, council will have the Radcliffe update with a lot of photographs where we're at. The dance floor is being put in, was the big ticket of really getting the programs over to Radcliffe, and also, the Head Start contract that is in our hands, it was too late to get to the table, and that's $104,000 per year contract. That'll be on the next agenda also, so that'll be part of Radcliffe, but that's something that just came to us, that's positive news of moving forward. So, three of our four tenants, we have contracts for in place, and that's the two at Maplewood and then one of the two at Radcliffe, so that's good stuff happening. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Earl.
First, it came up properly. Can I get an update on, do we have an update on the construction?
Nothing's happening there. It's for sale. It's for sale.
It's for sale again?
For sale.
Okay, it looks like, it looks horrible, weeds all over the place. Are we on them every day? Because there's somebody that owns it. I get that we can't dictate what goes in there, I get that we can't make them build something, but we sure can make them, make it look proper. It looks horrible when you drive by it. It looks horrible from Ford Road, it looks horrible from the road behind it, it looks horrible from Middle Belt. You know, that makes, used to be the main property around here. So, I would like to see, on a daily basis, if we have to, going up there and holding them accountable for how it looks. So, if I can get an update on that. I asked, I've asked several council meetings now, have we heard anything from the county on the flooding issue? Have we approached the county about our request on that?
I talked to Brad afterward. Let me get back with Brad, and I'll give you a call tomorrow morning, just make sure that...
I want to hear...
...Bullock Works deals with the county on that.
All right, I mean, we don't have a county representative that comes to our meetings anymore, which is ridiculous. So, you know, do we have to do a resolution to make sure that we're asking the CEO's office and the water, the people that are in charge of this, to come here and explain to us why our streets flooded and why we've had so many hundreds and probably close to a million dollars in damage to all these houses? I'd like somebody to explain that to us. And then, since we're on the topic of the DDA, I would like to see us promote it, try to get other people to get on the DDA. Maybe we can get somebody, you know, it says right in the beginning, why it was formed, and one of the things is, and we've talked about economic development, so maybe we can get somebody who specializes that, who would be willing to be on the DDA. It would be nice to see, you know, someone with a specialty like that to get on there and assist the board. That's all I have for right now.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember DeMichael.
The only thing I have to say in reference to everything that's just kind of been going on, and specifically, I'm just going to go towards ordinances. So, the residents really understand how this works. You make a complaint, and it goes into the system, and if they don't get their green ticket, they're going to go ahead, and they get their warning, and if they don't go ahead and actually clean up or do whatever it is that they got this violation for, they could get a ticket. If they pay that ticket and say that this was for a new roof, all we can do is continue to give them additional violations, and there's a long step process, and they could fight it and go to, you know, to court. There's, there's a long process. So, just because you see something out there, and you're thinking, geez, why, you know, now, with the city, we can go in and have them cut the grass because that's what we can do for cleanups, but there's additional processes and things in place, and it's not just, oh, well, they need to clean up, or they need to paint their garage. Well, they'd rather maybe pay a $50, $100 ticket than have to pay someone to re-side their entire garage.[1741.00] their entire garage. There's a long process and things that takes place, and I just, I ask that, if you have questions in reference to this, just make yourself a little bit educated about it, or ask. We've got great people in the PD Department and the chief, and there's a process to this. So things are getting done. It's just maybe not necessarily in the way that you like, and like I said, there are ways to go around that if you don't want to actually fix what might be the bigger issue. And that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Before I go to councilmembers, squires, I see Mr. Preston is here from our state representative's office. Did you have a report out or anything? Do you want...
Not really, Ms. Mayor. Just wanted to...
We're not used to having you guys show up, so I'm going to give you the opportunity...
And I apologize. We've got a new district coordinator. Unfortunately, I'm sorry that we haven't been here, and there really no excuses. Okay. But just wanted to bring greetings from Rep. Jones. We've been in summer recess since June. We go back to work in September. If there's anything you need, you know, you can call me at any time and be more than happy to respond. We want to, we want to continue to support Garden City and provide whatever we can to help.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Preston. Councilmember Squires.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Farron. I accept your apology. I appreciate it. And I do have something positive about Mr. Kremas. He did, in fact, save, helped save the parade many years ago when the, when the American Legion Riders no longer could handle it, and I want to thank you for that.
You're welcome. It was my pleasure. I love the parade. Now that I'm done with it, it bums me out.
Thank you. And that's it.
Councilmember Lynch.
I have nothing tonight, other than to wish our clerk, Miller, a speedy recovery.
Yep. Councilmember Carefotos.
I have a list. One is, I agree earlier, we were talking about following the charter. I think that's very important. There's been several things in the last couple of years that, there was questions whether or not we followed the charter, so I think we need to pay more attention to that. The second thing is, we talked about this $2.3 million that we have the last couple of years that we can use for anything that we want, and I think some of that should be used for the DDA when it comes to an economic developer, whether it's through our city or through the DDA. That's a good use of funds, if you ask me, that we hire someone, even if it's part-time, to be an economic developer. And then the other thing I want to say is, before, we seem to, every week, talking about the same thing, about spending money at Radcliffe, and I'm all for that, but I've asked for this before. I think the council should see a budget of what's going on at Radcliffe. And I don't just mean what's, I got the email. I'm not talking about just, like, what's already spent, but like, how much are we spending in the future? Like, are we going to spend the whole $2.3 million there? What are we going to do? It would be nice just to see a budget. We had a budget for everything else in the whole city, every other department, but we don't have a budget for that. And then I wanted to, again, mention, I found another city that does the same thing that I mentioned last week, about having a mass email that our residents can sign up for, and then all the stuff that we talk about that doesn't get out there. If people want to know, it's the agenda, it's things that are going on, like the report that you're going to give on Radcliffe, just, it's making, making people aware of things that we're doing, positive things. Could be continuing education, it could be whatever, but I, I hope that the city manager or the clerk take that suggestion seriously, and that we start a program like that, because I think our residents would be interested in that. And the other thing, I had a question. We talked about tonight about utilizing the lawyer and finding out from the lawyer information, and then the last time that we talked about using the lawyer or getting the lawyer's opinion, we said we had to vote on it, but the mayor just said that he, that you guys went to the lawyer about other things, and we didn't vote on those things. Why do we, why can, why do we ask for the lawyer? Sometimes there's a vote, and then sometimes there's not. That needs to be addressed. I'm sure money's being spent, and we're not all voting on it. So, you know, we talked about getting that marijuana lawyer in, and I still would like to bring that up, that, why do we have to vote on that? Why can't we just say, some of us want it? Nobody voted to find out about the DDA or about this, the deal with the charter. Why didn't we get asked about that? So I think that stuff needs to be addressed. I think that's important. And then, oh, I was doing some reading in the charter also, and I saw in there that we're supposed to have a managerial audit every five years, and I've never heard of that. I don't know if we've done that before, but I know earlier, we had our audit company in, and they gave a great review, and we did a really good job. Does, who knows when's the last time we had a managerial audit? It says it's supposed to be from a company that the council picks. So I haven't heard of that. So I think that we should find out about that, too. That's all I got.
Okay. Councilmember Jacobs.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First, I want to give a big thank you to the fire department and our police department. Couple of weeks ago, Mr. Kaladus passed away. The fire department chief Harmon reached out to Romulus and got a fire truck to hang our flag at the funeral home. Since we didn't have a fire truck available, ladder truck, they were, they were very much appreciative of it. Lieutenant Smith and Sergeant Daniels from the police department volunteered their time to be guards of the, at the casket that day, so they took time out and did that. And then the procession, I know the family was, was greatly appreciative of everything they did. So, again, our fire department, police department going out of their way, volunteering their time on a short notice. It's noticed and is very appreciative. I brought up the fence. I just found out they, they broke ground today to put it in over at the ice rink, so hopefully that'll get done soon before somebody gets hurt over there. To Mr. Mohler's problem with DTE and their, his grass, seems we have this issue with DTE all the time. Can we get with our DTE liaison and ask her to get with these guys and make sure it gets done? Every project they do, we have an issue with restoration. Every project, and it's a fight. He shouldn't have to call them and beg them for three, four times to come out before they just do a half-good enough job that he'll quit complaining. Last thing, I agree with councilmember Carefotos on getting an opinion on the marijuana again. In my years, this is the first time, or last meeting, or two meetings ago, was the last time, or the only time, we've ever had a vote to get a lawyer in here. Any other time, we brought a lawyer in to get information. We're not voting on bringing marijuana in. We're getting information. Right now, we're not getting the proper one. We're not even getting accurate information. The $5,000 or $15,000 per license isn't accurate. I'm not a business owner, but I'm sure some others. When you invest over $10 million in a building, in a city that's been vacant and blighted for over 20 years, you probably have some sense of what, what kind of profits or sales you're going to have. They're projecting well over $20 million a year. That money would be bringing in about $400,000 a year to the city. That's not going through the state, it's not going through the county, the feds, whatever laws they change, that's not going through them. That would come to us. So the $5,000 and the $10,000, or whatever we charge for fees and licenses that the state and the feds can change, that's not accurate. There's a lot more money out there. That's why Westland, their lawsuits are not for...
Did he say...
...the marijuana. It was for how they chose who was going to get the licenses. So we, we haven't had lawsuits on that, and I think, I still think, if we get an attorney that is established, and is smart, and not biased, to answer our questions, I think we'd be way further ahead.
I just want to be clear, councilman. Did you say all the tax money comes to us from marijuana sales?
Not all tax money. Not all tax money.
You said $450,000?
If they do a revenue, if they do revenue between $20 and $30 million.
Yeah.
Their tax, whatever their, however they do their roles...
Doesn't it go to all to the state?
Mm-hmm. If it goes, it comes to us. The city would get, get approximately $400,000.
After it goes to the state? Or are you saying directly it comes to the city? Sales tax for marijuana goes to the state, and then it's split by the number of organizations you have?
Yeah, but there's another tax in there. There's an excise, or there's another tax in there. But this is one of the questions that a qualified attorney would answer. Because obviously, none of us have the exact answer. But if there's X amount of dollars to be out there, and we're transforming blighted buildings and empty lots, I'd like to get an opinion that, that can get that question I'm, I'm just not sure why everybody's opposed to getting information.
Mayor, can I just comment?
Councilmember Earl.
And I apologize, when this was brought up, I had an emergency happen, and I couldn't make the meeting. But, you know, I have asked for this attorney to come in, and, and I agree, we're spending all kinds of money. Attorneys are being called for all kinds of opinions. Why we can't get? We had one opinion from one city attorney who represents the cities. I'd like to hear from the other side, just so I can get a full picture of what this looks like. I'm not asking for us to vote on whether or not we do it, but I would like to hear the attorney and have the attorney come in here and speak. And it doesn't hurt anybody, it doesn't commit anybody. What it does is give us knowledge, and, and how can you make conscious decisions without knowledge? And that's what I'm asking for. A lot has changed over the years, and I'm not, I'm not constantly asking for attorney opinions on this and that. I'm asking for this one thing. I don't know why we would have to vote on it. I don't understand that. When we don't vote, if, if you're going to do it, then you have, we should have to vote for every attorney opinion. We don't. This is the only thing we've ever said you have to vote on. So I don't agree with that. I'm asking that we have this attorney come in and speak to us, and just give us some kind of knowledge, so we can look at the issue, which is what we promised the citizens.
Okay.
Having said that, could we vote on that again, or do we have to vote, or...
Why do we even have to vote? We...
I don't know, because certain people keep saying we do. We've never voted in seven years on a lawyer. In seven years, we've never voted on a lawyer.
We don't vote on our own lawyer. We vote on bringing in an additional.
So in seven years, we haven't had an outside attorney? Because since I've been at council, we've never voted once for an attorney.
Right. Because...
In seven years? I got to believe we've...
The MMRA is technically our attorney, and we use them because that's what we pay them for. But we haven't had, to the best of my knowledge, an attorney other than our own attorney, our own city attorney, or someone that's representing that firm, or the MMRA.
Okay, then I would say, again, now that we have a full council, I'd like to get an attorney.
The last time there was attorney here and gave an opinion, she wasn't our attorney, and we didn't vote to bring her in.
But we... The... The... The...
She's not our attorney.
You didn't vote on her?
No. She is not our attorney. Our, our city manager found her through a recommendation through the state, and we didn't vote to have to have her come out. So why do we have to vote now?
I, I believe you guys discussed it at the workshop, saying that we'd like to have an attorney come in and explain to us, so I contacted the city attorney who works for the council, doesn't work for me. City attorney called Lansing, said who would be the most knowledgeable. They passed it down that this is the company to call, and it is the same company that represents us, but it's not the same attorney. But I think it was kind of a consensus that everyone at the council said, let's have somebody come in and see where we are with this.
We're saying that again.
Wasn't that the...
That's up to the council.
Wasn't that the second time that we had an attorney come in? It was our attorney, and then the one from the state? Is that correct?
Our attorney doesn't know about marijuana law.
Our attorney said he wasn't qualified to answer any of the questions. And in, in my opinion, the one the state recommended wasn't either.
We should do what the majority of the council wants. That's why there's seven of us here.
Okay, then let's vote.
And we need to put it on general?
He can make a motion now.
Yeah. I make a motion, vote on bringing in the other attorney for marijuana.
Support.
Adult use.
Motion by councilmember Jacobs. Support from councilmember Earl.
Can I make a quick comment?
Go ahead.
I think your motion should be a little more specific. You left it very general.
Okay. Law firm with Catherine Kaufman, who is a attorney for many municipalities and cities, not, not, not with the marijuana industry, and not with the state. Just kind of an independent gives counsel to, to cities and communities.
Yeah.
So to bring her, her and maybe her partner, if she's, if that's what they want to do.
Councilmember Jacobs, did I just hear you say that she's not with the state, and she's not a marijuana specialist lawyer? So...
No, I said she is a marijuana specialist lawyer.
Sorry, I misheard you.
Okay. No, she is a marijuana specialist lawyer, but she doesn't work for the state. She works for municipalities and communities that have questions, that want to know how to get it into the cities legally, without lawsuits, and how to, if they put too many in, they can back off and, and deny some. And she's done it very successfully both ways. So she's brought some in, she's taken some out, and she said she hasn't, there haven't been lawsuits, and from different municipalities that I've heard from, they haven't had an issue. So it's basically just to get information.
I understand the getting information, and like I said, when we had stated before, we've already had two attorneys discuss this, even if you were saying that, to you, that, that they weren't, they weren't up to your par for opinion. I feel like at this point, we're going from attorney to attorney until we find someone to say, yes, this is okay. And because these other ones have already said no, this puts you at risk, that's where I'm uneasy. So I'm still going to vote no to have an, I just feel like we're going from attorney to attorney, and that's my opinion.
Only, only one said no, or said that we were open to lawsuit on everything. The other one disqualified himself, basically. He said he wasn't qualified. So we've only had an opinion from one, from the state, and she didn't really answer any questions, other than open the whole city up, and eh, you can still get sued. Doesn't really matter. That was basically her, her answer.
So if we, if, if we go through this...
If we go through this, I will not bring it up again. How's that?
If this person says, oh yeah, no, you're safe, I would then want another lawyer to come in, because now we got one versus one, even though we did have it, would have been our second legal opinion. So it, like I said, I feel like we're just going through the steps, and until the state comes down with better regulations, that's just how I feel.
We only had one attorney that gave no information. All I'm asking for is getting information. The other one didn't give any.
I, I would...
You can say anything that she did.
Mayor, do we have, we have a valid motion and a second on the floor, right? Okay, so there's discussion.
Mayor and council, just one other thing for councilmember Jacobs, that from a clerk's point, we'd like to see in there, is a cost consideration. Like, you don't have to know exactly how much, but just not to exceed, because you don't want to say, okay, we'll bring this in and then get an invoice later for exorbitant amount.
I'd be okay depending on the dollar amount. Would you ever find out?
I don't know what they charge. What, uh...
It was $300 an hour.
Say $3,000. I don't know what we spent on our attorneys on the last couple.
Why? We don't...
If we don't go there, then we're fine. If she comes in and then spends two and a half hours answering 100 questions, we're going to cut her off and go, oh, your time's up, and we can't pay you anymore.
If she charges $300 an hour, that would be 10 hours.
But if she doesn't use it, we're not paying it.
I'd be, I'd be more comfortable to vote to have this come in if it was like a limitation up to 500 or even $600 an hour. But just to open, end it up to 3,000, I'm not comfortable with that. But I would consider doing that if we had a specific cap on it.
Okay.
Which, thank you, Deputy Treasurer. I appreciate that. Or Deputy Clerk?
Make 15,000.
$1,500.
That's reasonable.
I just don't understand what the rush is.
So, I guess, this is the only comment I have on this. I voted no originally when this came up, because the state was a mess, the law was a mess. I didn't want it on Ford Road. I didn't want it into the neighborhoods. I wanted it controlled. There's been a lot of changes. Even the one, we've had one attorney that could speak to it. When she showed up, she did say that she, there's a lot of places that don't have lawsuits. I wanted further information. And the reason I wanted further information is because I made a promise to a lot of citizens that when the state does change, we would, and not just me, a lot of the council members said, when the state does change, that we would take a second look at it. I don't want this still on Ford Road and all these other places. The question is, and the question that we asked her, and she did kind of say yes, is can we do it in this one little section and do it a certain way where we can't get sued? You know, and I felt like this one attorney, who turns out is related to the attorney that we have, kind of tried to guide us down, don't do it. You know, I want an open, honest opinion. I'm just trying for education on this. I don't care if we limit it to $600. I really don't. But I want an open and honest opinion from an attorney, because that's what was promised to the citizens and ultimately, that's why we're here. And that's, that's why I'm asking this. I'm still kind of upset that we actually have to go through this procedure to do it. And I understand some people just are flat out, as I've been told, against it and will be always against it. That's fine. That's your opinion. But I would like to hear information on it. And that's where I'm at.
Mayor?
Councilmember-
May I ask, what happens if we get the, you know, have this attorney come in now? And then, in the fall, the feds and the state have different rules and have different things? Do we have to get somebody in again?
Things change. I mean, they change from when you guys first made the ordinance.
Yeah, they did.
Things are, right. So, now we're discussing it again. It's called evolving and moving forward. And things change, we change.
I would say if there's going to be any change, the feds are getting more involved in it. They want more in it, because they want their hands in the money that's available.
That's funny. We just don't want this to be a repeated procedure.
Well, once we have-
Every six months or every year, we have to have an attorney come in for an opinion.
But I think if we get the ordinance in, if this attorney, whatever, if we go that way, if the attorney gives us guidance on how to do it, it's it. We haven't had an issue with, with the three medicals that, that have come in.
No, because they're not open.
Well, one's about to be open. So, I mean, you know, it's, uh-
The argument is not whether or not we're going to do it. The argument is, we just want more knowledge. It's not about changing the ordinance. We need more knowledge if we're going to change the ordinance.
Right. We're not changing anything right now. What we're doing is getting information to see if it's, if it's a possibility further down the line. If there's a, especially monetary and an economic benefit to the city where we're taking a 20-year blighted building and dumping all that money into it, making it beautiful. You got an empty lot that has another one. You have empty buildings in that industrial area that could be, could be fixed up, that are sitting there vacant still for years. So, if there's an opportunity that somewhere down the line, and we have the information that we can make an informed decision instead of just your personal opinion, then I think, I'm for getting just more information. That's all we're going for right now.
Councilmember Lynch?
I said the last time that I was hoping to getting information. I'm glad that you said that we're not jumping on this, because that says that we're getting more information.
Information is all we're asking for.
I, again, want to see what the feds are going to do, because that's going to be a game changer if they take it off the list. But getting more information, there's nothing wrong with getting information. But I don't want to see us jump then right away. And I, what you said-
This attorney could come in and say, no, it's not a good fit for you guys. So, I don't know.
No, but what you just said gave me the indication that you're in the same frame of mind, that get the information doesn't mean we're going to jump immediately.
Correct. Correct.
We're not going to jump from the pan to the fire.
Right. We're not voting on bringing it in. We're bringing, we're voting on an attorney to get information.
No, I agree. I, I-
As Councilwoman Earl said, it's, that's, that's what we promised our residents. Do what's best for the city. And let's, if that brings us some money, good.
No, I'm, I'm for the information, so.
I have a question. How much did we spend on the attorney the last time? Not our normal attorney that came in and them ended up giving us the recommendation? Do you roughly know?
I'm going to vaguely remember like a 12 or 13, 1400 or so.
Okay, so 1,500 would be-
Then that was a little pre-work and not just the meeting itself.
Right.
I would say 500's not enough, obviously, if they're here for an hour, two hours plus drive time, plus maybe a little research. But-
Okay, so 1,500's reasonable?
Sure.
Any comments from the general public before we vote? Take the roll call, please.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Aye.
Councilmember Earl?
Aye.
Councilmember Carefotis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember DeMichael?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye.
Thank you.
Do you have any more, Councilmember Jacobs?
No, that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, do you have any?
Just best wishes and hope for a speedy recovery for Clerk Miller. And thank you guys for having me. So-
Good having you tonight. I just want, in case there's any confusion out there, because I know how rumors fly, there's been no corruption of any of these seven members or the city manager. There was an employee issue that was brought to the city manager. He investigated it. And those employees no longer work here. And that's it. There's no, no corruption going on at City Hall. And that's basically all I can say on that. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I've been getting texts that we're not on Facebook Live, we're not on YouTube. People can't see us tonight. I don't know what's with the-
My sister couldn't either see. She's at home watching, but she, she's asking me, where are you?
Yeah, they're saying we're, we're not-
Facebook was the problem tonight.
Yeah. So, nobody, I don't think anybody at home's seen, seen this.
She's got, she's got wild TV and she can't see.
Yeah. We tape it. It will be posted, but nobody watched it live tonight.
We are on YouTube, actually.
It's live on YouTube right now.
Oh, it is? They finally got it on? Okay. Again, if you want to be on a board or commission, come up to City Hall and sign up. Again, and I will say this, if you get appointed and you're on, and then you're on social media attacking the administration several times, don't need you on the board. And you, you won't be on the board very long. And I don't make any apologies for that. We want positive people that love this city and let's move forward. That's what we're after. And I'll just keep it at that. No further business. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.